I would like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington Board of Trustees on May 15, 2018, at 8:01 a.m. We only have one action item, canvas election returns for the trustee election held on May 5, 2018. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Hibbs and trustees. You have before you a set of materials relating to the results of the trustee election, which was held Saturday, May 5, 2018, to elect trustees to three-year terms for Places 1, 2, and 3, and the final year of a three-year term for Place 5 on the Board of Trustees for the Arlington Independent School District. The set of materials you have before you contains the following: a summary sheet of the total ballots cast and votes received for each candidate by polling location; two, an official cumulative report of early votes and election day votes for each candidate from Tarrant County Elections Administration; and three, an official precinct report by polling location from Tarrant County Election Administration. The results of the election are as follows: Place 1, Polly Walton, 7,234 votes; Luis Castillo, 2,216 votes. Place 2, Kristen Hudson, 4,426 votes; Melody Fowler, 5,143 votes. Place 3, Roger DeFrang, 2,270 votes; Aaron Reich, 6,971 votes. Place 5, Justin Chapa, 7,337 votes; Hunter Crowe, 2,137 votes. If you accept this canvas of election to fill three-year terms for Places 1, 2, and 3, and the final year of a three-year term for Place 5 on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, it would be appropriate to hear a motion to approve the canvas at this time.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
I so move that we accept this recommendation.
A second. Please vote. Raise your hand affirmative. All members voting in the affirmative, this motion passes. We would like to congratulate all of our trustees that will be serving these next terms. It is now 8:03, and this open meeting is adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the meeting of the AIST Board of Trustees on 5:17, 18, at 5:00. Our first item this evening is the recognition of outgoing trustee, Mrs. Kristen Hudson. It is our tradition to honor trustees for their service to the community upon the end of their term, and this evening we would like to honor Mrs. Hudson for her service to the community as a trustee beginning in June 2015. I would like to welcome any trustees that would like to make some remarks. This would be the appropriate time.
Thank you for that permission. Please pardon my tardiness. I got here as fast as the traffic would allow, and I definitely would not want to miss this opportunity. Kristen, first of all, I'd like to just thank you for your service. Being a mom of children, I understand this is something that we volunteer to do, but at the same time, we still have made sacrifices to take time away from our family, our children, our husbands, even if some of that getaway is really wanted. I really appreciate you making that sacrifice. I do want to say that your passion and your love and the knowledge that I think that you've gained over these last three years about advocacy, I really hope that you continue to stay in that arena in one way or another, whether it's city, district, state, PTA, however you choose to do that, I just hope that you really do take that knowledge and the passion that you already have and continue to use it to help service our community in whatever way that you choose to do that. It's been my pleasure. I've enjoyed serving next to you over the last three years, and I just continue to wish you continued blessings going forward.
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Hibbs. Well, Kristen, we're going to miss you. You are a remarkable young woman, wise way beyond your years. Your lack of ego and quest for fame has made you the perfect friend for our children, and I thank you for that. Your drive and intelligence has enabled you to address needed changes and move the needle in the positive direction for our students. Our strategic plan has your fingerprints all over it. Your influence will be continued to be felt, and we'll move our district forward. Your heart and kindness have guided your direction and decisions. Kindness and love can change the world, and you've certainly changed our world. You've given freely of your time and talents, as Mrs. Mays said, to others without expecting anything in return. You're the best kind of board member and servant leader and friend to all of us. My first vivid memory of Kristen Hudson was in April of 2015, three years ago, and we were at a political forum in the east part of Arlington, and we were both first-time campaigners, candidates at the time. All the candidates were giving their answers to the standard question, "Who are you and why are you running for the school board?" Keisha's opponent got to answer first, and as the incumbent on the school board at that time, he was part of the board that had just won the honor of being the Texas School Board of the Year. And, of course, he highlighted this achievement in his answer as well he should have. But then he added, and he just couldn't understand why all these folks had crawled out of the woodwork to run against members of this award-winning board. Well, when it finally got to be Kristen's turn to answer, she said, "I'm Kristen Hudson, and I'm one of the folks who crawled out of the woodwork, and let me tell you why." I was impressed. Kristen had made an impression. Let me tell you, she can think on her feet, and she's an exceptional campaigner. Election night came, and we both won our places on the board, to the surprise of many, including both of us. And when I called her that night to congratulate her, she was in shock and said, "What do we do now?" And I answered, "Well, the AIST annual budget was the next task, you know, on the agenda, and so we agreed to talk about that another day." The crack of dawn the next day, Kristen called me, full of questions, all about how do we tackle becoming, you know, adept at budget-making. She was in shock no longer. It was certainly a short period. So we decided to ask the experts, the AIST staff, about budgeting. That was the first of a long list of district departments that we visited over the next three years. Kristen visited a whole lot more of them than I did, but I think probably met with every leader of every department that there is in our district. She made a conscientious effort also to visit all the school campuses, too. The lady knows how to research an issue. Kristen came to the board with several goals in mind, and one of these was to improve the health and welfare of our youngest students, especially our recess policy. She focused on getting the state-required Student Health Advisory Committee, a committee of community advisors, up to speed, and along with our Assistant Superintendent Michael Hill, she worked to develop the new improved Shack Committee, and it's hitting its stride, beginning to move things forward and make, you know, make a difference. One of the things that has been included and has come out of that is the LINK Project, which is the TCU Research Program, studying the positive effects of four recesses a day for kindergarteners in first grade. So far, the data on LINK is looking pretty promising and indicating that our youngsters are healthier, more active, and better learners in the classroom. So I just want to end with two things. Good job. Thank you. And a quote from one of my favorites, Mr. Rogers, of Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood fame. He summed up endings like this, quote, "Often when you think you're at the end of something, you're at the beginning of something else." I've felt that way many times. My hope for all of us is that the miles we go before we sleep will be filled with all the feelings that come from deep caring: delight, sadness, joy, wisdom, and that in all the endings of our lives, we will be able to see the new beginnings. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hibbs. I have the honor of serving next to Kristen up here on the dais and also have worked with her the least, having just come onto the board myself back in September. But I actually met Kristen after that 2015 election that Polly just referenced. I had worked with and was friends with her opponent back then, and I did not know Kristen, and I was very vocal in my support of her opponent. And yet, when I reached out to Kristen after the election and asked if she would meet with me to talk about things going on in the district, she immediately responded, and we had a great lunch at Chick-fil-A with our kids running around, and my wife Anna was there as well, and knew right away that Kristen's heart was in the right place and that our students would be well-served by you in this capacity. Over the past seven months, I've gotten to know you and appreciate your insight into all sorts of issues that Polly just talked about, very passionate about student health and those things. We found common ground on many of those issues. But what I came to appreciate, I think, just as much, is the levity that you brought to many of our proceedings back in the room, that whenever we needed a, maybe a tense moment, needed a laugh, or something I could count on you to start humming some bars from a hip-hop song, that maybe only I recognized. And so, in the last seven months, I've come to appreciate you both as a colleague, and I'd like to thank as a friend as well, and I appreciate your service, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Each one of you has had some very elegant remarks, and I think they really capture Ms. Hudson. Ms. Hudson, we have two board members that are currently in the air right now, and they both have sent letters that I get to read. So let me start with Mr. Hogg. It says, "I'm sorry, I cannot be in attendance to honor one of our colleagues and a true servant. I am probably somewhere in the sky over Nebraska as we speak. Otherwise, I would be there. Service to our students, staff, and community is essential to the success of our district. I am proud of this board and the things that we have accomplished over the last few years. Public education is under attack, and we are all luckily are willing to fight the good fight. Kristen, you opened my eyes to many new perspectives over the years, and I thank you. While we didn't always agree on every vote, we always knew each other had the best interest of our kids at heart. Every day, you were willing to fight for the kids of our district, and I truly appreciate that. From the meetings trying to convince legislators why public education is so critical to the basic votes of everyday items, you worked tirelessly for the AIST, and that impact will be felt for years to come. I truly thank you for your service and for the impact that you have made on the school system. We are blessed in getting to know your family, and a personal thank you to your family for allowing us to borrow your wife and your mom to serve this district so faithfully." This is Mr. Hogg. Mr. Reich, Kristen, I wish I was able to be there in person, but know that the words are sincere, as if I was standing directly in front of you. Thank you for your care, your compassion, and service for the students of the AIST. Over the past three years, you have done your very best to serve this district and become familiar with the schools and processes affecting teachers and students. It has been a fast and furious three years, and you should leave feeling proud for what you have done and what we have been able to do as a team, from the development of the district's second strategic plan, numerous policy updates, legislative advocacy, including trips to Austin, the opening of several schools, the Career Tech Center, and so many other facilities associated with the 2014 bond implementation, to your participation on the board's audit, governance, and community engagement committees. Your name will be synonymous with each one. Your involvement will not go unnoticed. Ultimately, you came in as an interested and dedicated mom, and you're going out continuing to be a interested, or interested, I'm sorry, and dedicated mom. Thank you for your service and your sacrifice away from being just your responsibilities as a mom and a wife, while you had responsibility to care for thousands of children in our community. On that note, I would like to say a personal heartfelt thank you to your husband, Brad, and to your two remarkable boys, Declan and Hudson. You've got quite a crew of men supporting you there. In closing, as our transition occurs, know that you'll be missed, and I truly look forward to your continued participation and support of our district in other ways. Blessings to you and wishes for great success in any endeavors that lay in your future path. That's Dr. Reich. Kristen, during our service together, it has been one that I can tell you, you've challenged even myself. You've challenged me in many different ways. All of the votes have never been identical, but I've always applauded you because the one thing that I said is that vote your conscience, and you've done that. You voted your conscience, and it's to the service and betterment of our community. We need to be challenged as a board, and you were able to do that. On your signs, you said, "I am an independent voice," and we need that because that's dependent of our district. I sent you a text a few days ago that I truly believe that your service here will continue to touch untold thousands for years to come, because what has already been mentioned by my fellow trustees, in so many things that have been accomplished, your fingerprint is definitely there, and our kids are better for that. Again, I thank you for your service and a heartfelt appreciation. Dr. C?
Thank you, Vice President Hibbs. Kristen, thank you for your service, not only for the adults in our district, but most especially for the students of our district. I have the opportunity to work with board members throughout the years, and every one of them, yourself included, has a big impact on my leadership. And you in particular, Kristen, very insightful, as Mr. Chapa mentioned, you know, very witty and quick to point out things that are maybe not obvious to everyone, and I just appreciate that. And you should leave with a sense of joy and satisfaction that your work will affect the lives of thousands of students, their future, the community, the state and the nation, and I'll say, the world. And not a lot of people have that opportunity, Kristen, and the way you approached that opportunity was with a tremendous sense of honor, responsibility, and you've been a blessing to Arlington ISD, to our students, to our staff, and you'll forever have impacted us. Thank you.
Kristen, in tradition, we have some presentations of gifts and acknowledgements that we still have for you, and you're going to get to speak in a few minutes, so you can get all the time you want, but I want to just take this time just to share with you that we do have a presentation of gifts and acknowledgements. Traditionally, the president would come down with Dr. C. I think it's very appropriate and fitting that as trustees, we gain certain individuals that we can entrust our thoughts and our feelings, the ability to share camaraderie, the ability to have a confidant, to have a mentor and a mentee, and I think it would be appropriate for Ms. Walton to be able to be down and give a presentation of these gifts with you tonight. So I'm going to ask all three of you if you could step forward or down towards the podium, As the three are walking forward, I'm going to ask Miles Wilson, who is here on behalf of Representative Chris Turner's office, he has our first presentation. Miles, would you step forward and make the comments?
Well, first, I want to apologize on Representative Turner's behalf. He couldn't be here today, but he definitely would have been otherwise. We just want to say a big thank you from him, myself, our office entirely, for your service and your truly being a champion for public education and the children of AIST, and we really appreciate it. We really appreciate your work, and we have a resolution signed by Representative Turner to read to you, and also a flag that we had flown over the Capitol in your honor. And the resolution reads, "Whereas Kristen Hudson has greatly benefited the youth of her community through her outstanding service as a member of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, and whereas first elected to represent Place 2 in 2015, Ms. Hudson has been a strong voice on the board and a passionate advocate for the educational needs of area students. Before and during her tenure, she has generously volunteered her time on behalf of AIST schools, and she is a former member of the Arlington ISD School Health Advisory Title I and Dual Language and Fine Arts Academy Planning Committees. And whereas Ms. Hudson graduated magna cum laude from the Missouri State University Honors College with a bachelor's degree in communications, and her professional career includes leadership roles in both corporations and charitable organizations, in addition to her work with local schools, she has gained valuable experience while serving as a charter member of the Aid Impact, a nonprofit dedicated to mentoring at-risk girls, and while serving as a co-founder and past vice president of Platform for Lives, a nonprofit that supports women and girls who are transitioning from the criminal justice system, she was also a volunteer for several area nonprofit theaters from 1998 to 2008. And whereas Kristen Hudson's leadership, vision, and commitment to excellence have made her a valued member of the Arlington School Board, she may indeed reflect with pride on her many contributions to her community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Kristen Hudson be honored for her service on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, and that she be extended sincere best wishes for the future. Signed, State Representative Chris Turner." And I don't know if I can say it as well as Mr. Rogers did, but we truly hope that your service continues far past tonight, and as I've said and as other members of the board have said, your contributions to the city and this community have been invaluable, and we truly hope that you continue making those.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for making that presentation, and please share our heartfelt thanks to Representative Turner. Kristen, one of the first things that we'd like to offer as an acknowledgement of your service is a crystal bowl presented by Dr. Cavassos. The second thing is a swinging children statue, and this is being presented by Ms. Walton on behalf of the board. It encapsulates what we're here for, and that's our children. And we know that this probably has more meaning to you than any of us, because I think, when I think about children swinging, that's at recess. So it's your heartfelt passion. The last presentation that we have is a certificate, and I know that Brad is holding the camera and filming this, but we're going to ask Brad to come on down, because we do have a certificate for you, for your support of Kristen, because one of the most important things is that you have been a rock for, and you have been able to help support her, and this certificate is to honor you and to give you great thanks. Now, Kristen, I'm going to give you the option. You're welcome to come back up to your seat and speak if you would like to hold your dais as you're talking, or you may speak from the podium microphone. Okay.
I had no idea you guys were going to make such a big deal. Gosh, Miles and Representative Turner, thank you so much. That was really, just really deeply touching, and I'll cherish that. Thank you. And also to, you know, you guys, thank you. That bowl will be filled with fruit before you know it. But yeah, you're absolutely right. The children swinging is definitely very special to me. So I don't have too terribly much to say. I won't take up a whole lot of your time, but I want to thank the departments and the school staff that opened their doors to me over these years, to the teachers, administrators, staff, and the volunteers that devote their service to our children and to building our future. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's supported my campaigns, whether that was with donations or simply a vote, and thank you very much to my husband, Brad, and our boys, Hud and Decl, for every minute you've shared me with our district. Excuse me. May God bless America, Texas, and the Arlington ISD. Thank you.
Once again, thank you. The time is now 5:35, and we will move into our work session and then return to the chamber approximately 6:15. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call back to order the meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on May 17, 2018, at 6:08 p.m. The first item is a special item on our agenda this evening, which is the administering of the oath of office. This is for Place 1, Place 2, Place 3, and Place 5. As you all know, we've had elections this past May 5, and the outcome of those elections are Place 1, Ms. Polly Walton was re-elected; Place 2, Ms. Melody Fowler, who is in the audience, was elected; Place 3, myself, Aaron Reich, was re-elected. Thank you. And Place 5, Justin Chapa was elected. So as we go through the administering of our oath of office, we have Judge Lynda Davis, who will be presiding, and it's an honor and a privilege to have you in our chamber, Judge. We so appreciate your willingness and support. For those of you that don't know, Judge Davis has a long history of being an Arlingtonite in being involved in our court system as JP II Court Justice for 14 years, for 14 years, is a lover of all things Arlington ISD and the Arlington community, and there's no better fit for someone, for us to have the privilege of you swearing us in this evening. So without further ado, I would like my colleagues that are being sworn in to head down to the podium with Judge Davis to begin the swearing-in ceremony, and I relinquish the floor to you, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Polly, I'll get you to come right here, and I'm going to read this. I'll get you to repeat it, okay? Okay? "In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas..." In the name...
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I...
I.
...state your name.
Polly Walton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...or affirm...
Or affirm.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
...trustee, Place One.
Trustee, Place One.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
...of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Now come around here. Come and show us where you sign.
Ms. Walton will sign the top.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Walton, if you'll sign right there. South part, too.
Yes. How are you?
Uh-huh. It works just fine.
It works pretty well.
See, we know how to tilt it.
Yes. We're the only ones operating in our right line.
I think you're right. Do you need this? Okay, and congratulations. Melody Fowler, how are you? Raise your right hand and repeat. "In the name and by the authority..."
In the name and by the authority.
"...of the state of Texas."
Of the state of Texas.
I...
I.
...state your name.
Melody Fowler.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
...trustee, Place Two.
Trustee, Place Two.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
...of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will...
And will.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws...
And laws.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome. You'll sign right there. I saw you're heavy. And then we need... Oh, here she comes. Congratulations. Erin Reich? Yay.
Waiting on the wings.
I'm telling you. Raise your right hand. "In the name and by the authority..."
In the name and by the authority.
"...of the state of Texas."
State of Texas.
I...
I.
...state your name.
Erin Reich.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will faithfully execute...
I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
...trustee, Place Three.
Trustee, Place Three.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
...of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
...and defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws...
And laws.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ah, congratulations. Okay. One more thing. You sign right there. It's your turn. Raise your hand and repeat after me. "In the name and by the authority..."
In the name and by the authority.
"...of the state of Texas."
Of the state of Texas.
I...
I.
...state your name.
Justin Chapa.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...or affirm... Or affirm... ...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
...trustee, Place Five.
Trustee, Place Five.
Arlington Independent School District.
Arlington Independent School District.
...of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
...and defend...
And defend.
...the Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws...
And laws.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Uh-huh, welcome. Come around here.
So now Judge Davis, I will return to the dais, and we'll have some remarks. But if there's anything you'd like to say, you still have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Well, congratulations and welcome. We're glad to have each of you. And that's my old friend over there.
We're actually high school.
Except he went to high school with my relatives. I was long gone.
That is neat. All right, so starting in order of places, Ms. Walton, would you like to share some words?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Just briefly, I just want to say thank you to all of my friends and family who have helped me through this campaign. And I know that I will continue to count on your support and love as I move through the next three years. And we try to continue to make Arlington ISD a great place to be, to live, to work, and to go to school. For the children, thank you very much.
Some excited audience members out there for Grandma here. That's great. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I want to thank all of my friends and family and supporters who have been with me through this long race. I thank you all so much for being here this evening, and I look forward to doing a good job on the AISD Board. And thank you for your trust, and I'll do a good job for you. Thank you.
Well, now it comes to me. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. It's nice to see so many in support. I do want to acknowledge that we have a couple of officials that have joined us in the audience. Ms. Roxanne Thalman, City Councilperson from District Three. Thank you for being here. There were other council folks that expressed their wishes to be able to be here, as well as our Mayor Jeff and wife Karen Williams send their best to all of us here this evening. We also have in the audience a former City Councilperson, Mr. Dixon Holman. And a lot of friends and supporters. I do want to just make one shout out across the pond to London. I believe I have my wife, my son and daughter, a brother-in-law and mother-in-law that are watching our event here. So if you are watching, hello? It's past midnight there, so almost 12:30, and they're still jet-lagged from getting over there. So I love you guys. Thank you so much for tuning in. And for everybody here tonight, thank you so much for the support. It's... It is humbling. It's an honor to continue to serve, to continue to have the trust of you and the rest of the citizens of Arlington, to continue to do our very important work that we do to make sure our children have the best opportunities available and our community is the best that it can absolutely be. So thank you very much. And with that, I will relinquish over to Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Reich. Glad to be back here. I was appointed back in September, and I was hoping that I would get to this point. And here we are. And so I have a lot of friends and family in the audience that but for them, I wouldn't be here. And so my mom and stepdad Bob are here, my father Rwell, my wife Anna, and my kids Benjamin and Audrey and Evelyn are all here tonight, my sister Sarah, who teaches and coaches at Bowie High School, and her husband Ryan, Rachel Glazer, Nick and Barbara Heiser. My brother-in-law and sister-in-law are here, BJ, Brad, Ingabretson and Kimberly Ingabretson, Marcelo Chapa and Monica Chapa as well. And so we brought the whole crew tonight. You might... Some of the faces might seem familiar to those of you who were helping out on other campaigns, because they were out almost every day helping me as well. And again, I wouldn't be here without them. I look forward to serving this next year on the Board of Trustees and making a difference for the students of Arlington. I'm from here, and my kids go here, and so we are in it for the long haul. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Cavassos for his leadership and mentorship and showing me the ropes these last seven months, as well as my fellow trustees. And I'd like to welcome Ms. Fowler to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we will do now, it's 6:22, we will take a brief recess so that we can have some time with you all. And then at 6:30, we will convene in closed session, so we've got to get to work. So we may adjust that just a little bit, but for the record, we will begin at 6:30, convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.074, Section 551.076, Sections 551.082 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purposes stated on the agenda. And after that, we will reconvene approximately 7:00 PM. Thank you. We'll recess. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on May 17, 2018 at 7:11 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to be with us this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Keisha Mays in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And also at this time, please silence all cell phones and any electronic devices that you have to avoid disruptions to those around you. I will do the same. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, it's been a big evening here in our boardroom. I would first like to say congratulations to our newly elected and reelected trustees who were sworn in earlier this evening. We have Ms. Polly Walton from Place One, Ms. Melody Fowler, Place Two, myself in Place Three, and Mr. Justin Chapa, Place Four. Please give them a round...
Five.
Five, sorry. Please give them a round of applause. Yes. Sorry, Mr. Hibbs. And also, personal privilege note, thank you, Mr. Hibbs, for leading in my absence earlier this evening. We did have an outgoing recognition for Ms. Kristin Hudson, trustee, that occurred earlier before the swearing-in. So thank you for that, and thank you to my colleagues for being able to be here and support her as well. So the first item on our agenda this evening is the organization of the Board of Trustees. By state statute and board legal policy, at the meeting immediately after elections and the qualification of newly elected trustees, which is this meeting, the board shall undergo the election of board officers for the new term. So just this one time, I will turn this gavel over to Dr. Cavassos, and he will convene.
Thank you, President Reich. Do we have a motion and a second for the Office of President?
Okay, this is with the technology here.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Yes, sir. I would be honored to nominate Dr. Erin Reich for a term of President of the AISD Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Walton, second by Ms. Fowler. Are there any other nominations? If not, please vote. All board members attending tonight in the affirmative. Congratulations, Dr. Reich, as Board President.
Thank you. Thank you. And to note, Mr. Hogg is not with us, but he will be joining us late this evening. He's traveling back here. All right, so the second item is the position of Vice President, and I would like to nominate Mr. John Hibbs as Vice President of the Board. I'm trying, Ms. Mays?
Second.
Okay, motion by myself, second by Ms. Mays. Any other nominees or comments? Speak now or forever hold your peace? That's what John wants me to say. All right, hearing none, please vote. Well, all present vote in the affirmative with a little bit of dissension from the audience. I don't know.
We still have to vote on your mama.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Hibbs, despite public comment. Next, we have the position of Secretary. Do we have a motion for the position of Secretary, Mr. Chapa?
I move that we elect Ms. Keisha Mays for the position of Secretary of the Board.
I would like to second that.
Excellent. We have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Hibbs for Mrs. Keisha Mays in the position of Secretary of the Board. Any further nominees or discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Congratulations, Mrs. Mays. Very good. All right, next on our agenda is the recognition of our outgoing Student Leadership Advisory Board. Hi, guys. All right. And our advisory board comprised of students, thank you for doing what you have done this year, and you're setting a great example for your peers and those coming up behind you in the ranks of grades. So I will turn it over to Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. With our first strategic plan, one of the things that we said is that we wanted to have engaged community, and we wanted to have an engaged community from our faith base. We wanted to have our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our administrators, those people that work within the community. And one of the first and foremost things that we all stopped and took pause in is we said we've got to get some type of voice from our students, the whole reason that we're here. And over the past few years, we've had a tremendous group of young men and women that have come and volunteered their time. They volunteered to do this job above all of their leadership activities onto the campus. And this last year was as good of a group as we've ever had. And we appreciate you, and we thank you for the time and the service that you put in. And we appreciate you, and we thank you for the time and the service that you put in for us as trustees, the feedback. We have an incredible person that's going to be leading and oversight of this group. Most individuals, Dr. C. will have to go and say, okay, I want to appoint you to have oversight of this committee of leadership students. And Dr. Beth Hollinger was said, she just said, I want to do this. I want to be part of this. So she's excited about being able to take this team. She worked with the incoming team today and worked with the next group of students that will be coming forward. I want to ask Dr. Beth Hollinger to come down, introduce her students, and allow for a few remarks from our outgoing president.
Yes, so we're going to change some things up. I hope y'all are flexible with that. Our Student Leadership Advisory Board, affectionately known as our SLAB Committee, is a part of making sure that our relationships are formed from our students and the voice across the district, as well as their opinions. And yes, we always want to hear the opinions of our students, and that's our group here. It consists of six of our junior class presidents at each of our traditional campuses, including Arlington Collegiate. And then in addition to that, we have one senior leader at the campus that is designated to lead the committee, that served on the committee last year, so to show kind of the ropes and what's going on. So our group this year is predominantly our junior group, so they are seniors for this upcoming school year. So we don't have them in our grasp on this committee for their senior year, but we are bringing in our next group of juniors this coming year. So at our 4:30 meeting today, we decided who that member would be that would move forward as the senior leader for next year. And I feel like I should have an envelope. Drum roll. That, our new senior SLAB president is Julia Almares from Arlington High School.
I'm Julia Almares. I go to Arlington High School, and I'm just really excited for this upcoming year. SLAB has taught me a lot about leadership and about what goes on in the inner workings of AISD, and I look forward to advocating for not only Arlington High School, but AISD in general. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much, everybody.
And I don't want to overlook the fact that when I stepped in mid-year, that Ms. Michelle Willis-Sonato that was here at the beginning of the school year with the students did an outstanding job, and I want to say thank you to her. And I am very greatly honored to be chosen for this position for this next year as well. I'm very excited about working with our students. Giving a little bit of context about what are some of the activities that the students have done working with our school board members. Each one of the students have been assigned to a school board member, and throughout the year, they work with them to familiarize the voice of our students across the district, as I said earlier. As our senior leader is exiting us, she's going to share some words about the things that she's experienced in her last two years on the board. So she is our senior president. Sorry, I had this all backwards on there. Ms. Noeli Vargas.
My name is Noeli Vargas. I represent James Bowie High School. I am the outgoing president of the Student Leadership Advisory Board. And being a member of this committee for the past two years, I've been able to participate in things that were not possible to me before. I've gotten so many opportunities, some of them being I was able to go to Austin and be a page for a day for one of our representatives there. And experiences like that has opened a lot of doors for me, speaking before you and other events such as this meeting. I was also invited to speak at an event for the Retired Teachers Association, and events like that opened doors for me, giving me more opportunities to expand my strengths in public speaking, making connections, and just getting to know how else I can make a difference in my community, other than just being a student and working in the community as well. Something else that I was able to participate in was the development of the school calendar for the next school year. And even though I'm not going to be here for the next school year in the district, participating in something like that has given me the opportunity to make a change for students and leave somewhat of a little sprinkle of legacy for others. I'd like to also formally thank you for the opportunities that you've given me, being able to grow. And I know that going off into college, I'll make sure to represent the Arlington School District in a very positive way. I'm a product of this district ultimately, and I hope that I can make you proud. Thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you to all of the board members.
You'll be signing shortly a letter stating that they were a part of the committee, and that will help them as they move forward going on to college and so forth. At this time, I'd like to open it up to...
Please.
...any comments by the group.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Thaddeus Ualaka Ikenya, and I just want to say how much of an honor it's been to be a part of this committee, and I can't thank each and every one of you enough for this. So with that being said, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Torres, and I attend Arlington Collegiate High School. And I just wanted to say, when I started out at Arlington Collegiate High School, the first parent meeting that we went to, Dr. Bolin, our principal, said something. He said, "Shoot for the stars, you might land on the moon." And I just wanted to say that I feel that I see that within you guys, because you do so much for the school board. And, you know, before being just a student at Arlington Collegiate, you know, maybe I wouldn't have been able to see that, but now I see like how much work is put into everything that, you know, every policy, every, you know, small thing that goes on in school. It's all because you guys put so much effort into it. So I wanted to thank you guys for that, and thank you for the opportunity to see everything that goes on behind the scenes.
Thank you very much.
My name is Justin. I represent James Bowie High School. I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to really develop myself as a person and as a character and as a leader towards my school. I really appreciate what you guys do for the school and for me, for giving me the opportunity to give you guys an input on what the student body needs and wants. And so, yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Crawford, and I represent Lamar High School. I just wanted to say that I'm so thankful for this program and everyone in the school board, because y'all just provide us with so many opportunities, and I'm so thankful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tatum Baffa, and I represent Martin High School. And again, I wanted to thank all of you, especially you, Mr. Chapa. You've given me so much advice throughout this year, and I've really enjoyed having you as my mentor and you always being like really supportive of everything I want to do and like learning new things about college and things like that. And I've loved all the opportunities I've gone to do, like serving the community and other schools, and also I'm really proud of you, Ms. Fowler, and I liked helping your campaign.
Well, thank you, students, for your time and sacrifice, because you're in that group of students that doesn't have anything else to do. And yes, that's very sarcastic. You are very, very engaged in many opportunities that are afforded you in our school district. And having this as one more added layer on top of everything else and sticking to this as a commitment, I commend you for that, because there is a lot of time and expectation. Just one point of note, I heard a few of you say, you know, besides being just a student to us, you're not just a student, you're our future. Thank you for what you do. You are paving the way and leading by example for your peers and for those that are coming up through the pipeline behind you. And for us, there is never such a thing as just a student. Everything that we do is to keep you in mind in the forefront, so that you, as a student, have the greatest opportunities and the access to those opportunities as possible. And we absolutely rely on your input, hence the name Advisory Board, for us as trustees, because we need to know and have that direct connection to our student body population, and you're it for us. So we learn from you, just as you've stated, you've learned things in this opportunity. So thank you very much. As Ms. Hollinger mentioned, there is a letter of recommendation that each one of us has signed for each one of you in your pursuits via college career, whatever you decide, and that surely will have some impact for those that will be viewing that, to have the entire Board of Trustees of a very large school district supporting you as individuals. We certainly do. Those will be coming to you shortly, and you have our contact information, you have our cell phone numbers. Anytime, please reach out to me, reach out to any of us. We are proud of you, we are proud for you, and we absolutely want to do everything we can to continue for you in building that leadership that this opportunity and experience has provided you. So Noeli, thank you for being president this year, and after having two years on this, best of luck to you and your endeavors as you launch from the district. We will be watching and listening to see and following how you navigate the next chapter and path. So I don't think we have anything else for the students at this time. So what I would like to do is, if you wouldn't mind, the next item on our agenda, we're going to switch it up just a little bit. Instead of, and please forgive me for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we have an appointment to make. And there are the appointee, their family, and their school community of friends here as well. And so what I'd like to do is take the opportunity to switch on our agenda and go through the appointments, and then after that, there's a brief recess, a reception, and it would be great if you wouldn't mind following out to the lobby to participate in that reception, so that we can all come down and personally shake your hand and congratulate you. So thank you again, students, for everything. So with that, Dr. Cavassos, we have administrative appointments.
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session to be the principal for Sheridan Elementary.
All right. We have a recommendation on the table. Is there a motion?
Uh-oh. I've been waiting for that. I'm sorry. Dr. Reich, I would like to move that we accept the administrative recommendation for Dr. Michelle Cummings.
Very good. Mrs. Mays?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Mrs. Mays for the appointment of principal of Sheridan Elementary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees, including Mr. Hibbs, present, vote in the affirmative. Congratulations.
As you know it, at this time, we'd like to, yeah, this time, we'd like to introduce Dr. Michelle Cummings as the principal for Sheridan Elementary. So Michelle attended the University of Central Florida, Bachelor of Science in Elementary Ed, University of Central Florida for Master of Ed, and Nova Southeastern University for Doctor of Education. Most recently, the interim principal at Sheridan Elementary, has been an assistant principal at Carter Junior High, a Title I Support Dean at Patrick, a Title I Support Dean at Crouch, and a fifth grade teacher at Crouch, has also taught fifth grade, third grade, and kindergarten in Orange County Public Schools in Florida. Dr. Cummings, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so, thank you so much. President of the Board, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, and other distinguished faculty and staff and everyone, thank you so much for this opportunity to positively impact the lives of our students. Throughout my years in AISD, I've had some amazing leaders, Mr. Peralis, Dr. Orsini, Mr. Brown, Ms. Tracy Brown in the back, thank you so much. More recently, Mr. Reni Lizardo and the awesome Carter Administrative Team. I have learned so much from them. There aren't enough words to express how thrilled I am to be working with the resilient and truly, truly dedicated Sheridan Shark family who all came out over here. Working with kids and enabling them to see a future for themselves that they may not have previously seen is my life's passion. I'm ready to do the work, and I know that with the continued support of my loving husband, my beautiful and talkative daughters over here, my faithful family, anything is possible. Today, I officially become a Sheridan Shark, and I couldn't be more proud. Thank you.
And what a photo moment, with the babies on your lap there, sir. So as is, as is tradition and custom, if you wouldn't mind, please following Mr. Kale to the lobby for that reception that I spoke of, and students, if you wouldn't mind as well. And for the audience, if you would mind giving us as the board the opportunity to lead that line, so that we can go ahead and come back and reconvene for business. It's 7:35. We will come back at 7:50. All right. I will call back in to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees at 7:50, right on target. We will continue on where we left off under program and presentation for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee presentation. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And at this time, we'd like to invite our CBOC representatives to provide a report to the board, and we'll kick it off with Ms. Powell to introduce them and their work. And just ahead of time, thanking the CBOC for their dedication and their hours and hours of really good oversight of our bond, and we appreciate it. So Ms. Powell.
Yes, so President Reich, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. When we began this, the 2014 bond program, the board adopted a charge to a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and they charged that committee with monitoring progress of the bond program and making recommendations back to the board about that progress and about ways that we might enhance the district's investment in our bond projects. So we meet quarterly with the Bond Oversight Committee. We move the meetings around to different places, so they can see the work that's being done, and a number of people off the staff assist in making presentations at those committees. And we always have very good dialogue feedback from the committee and great discussions. And so tonight, we have the chairperson, Will DeKime, here this evening, and a number of our CBOC members, who I think Will will acknowledge them formally during his presentation, but they are here this evening to make their report to you.
Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. My name is Will DeKime, and I'm the chairperson for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. This evening, I'm going to provide our report on our observations and recommendations as they relate to the bond. The agenda I'm going to follow tonight is to cover the purpose of what the Bond Oversight Committee was supposed to do and is doing, what the composition of our Bond Oversight Committee is, the meetings that we had, and we're going to go through each of the 11 points of our charge and answer what our observations were and provide recommendations at the end in terms of what we saw and how to meet the intent of our charge. And then I'd like to wrap up with special thanks to not only those who assisted us along the way, but also members who are present in this room that are part of our committee. the way, but also members who are present in this room that are part of our committee. So just a, a brief review of the purpose of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee essentially is to provide transparency and to enhance public confidence that the tax dollars allocated through the Bond Program are being used appropriately. We are to provide any findings or recommendations to the Board of Trustees on how the expenditures are going, the progress, in order to maximize the potential of the Bond. We are composed of 11 members with six alternates, and we are members from this community that are students, that are teachers, former students, higher education leaders, parents, veterans, engineers, realtors. We have a, quite a wide variety of involved members on this committee that are here to help us do the best we can to oversee the Bond. We have met so far four times. One of the meetings was an orientation for our new members, and the three were quarterly meetings. Those quarterly meetings were held at the Career Technical Center, at the Ag Science Building, and then at Duff Elementary School this year. We will have one more meeting this year, our final quarterly meeting, that will be on August 9th, at a location to be determined. Going to go through each of the 11 points of our charge, and I'll call out what the charge was, and then indicate any observations that we had during the course of our interaction with AISD staff and fulfilling our charge, and then provide recommendations in summary at the very end as well. So our first charge was to review essentially the Capital Need Steering Committee guidance that said, here's what the Bond Program is supposed to do and why. And our observation was that, in our fourth year here, the AISD staff has done an excellent job orienting new members to what's the purpose of the Bond, what are the goals. They very expertly linked the strategic objectives to the actual outcomes and intended effects for each of the different aspects. Our recommendation at this point is to continue to sustain those efforts. You've got that methodology down, it's easy to orient new members to what is going on and to bring them up to speed very rapidly for the $663 million Bond. Our second charge is to review the processes that are used to select and qualify and select design professionals and contractors for projects that are funded by the Bond Program. This year, we observed that the quoting and bidding processes were very well explained to us, we had a clear understanding of how selections are made, we had a clear explanation as to the changing market conditions. You know, the availability of contractors ebbs and flows depending upon what's going on with other construction projects in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and, and even in our own city. A great effort was, was spent to explain the efforts that the staff are taking to either follow cost reduction measures or get the best bang for the buck in terms of the bid proposals, et cetera, and in some cases, have flat out decided to go out and seek rebidding on projects that none of the, the bids met the expectation or were they potentially not in alignment with our budgeting requirements, went back and, and took a look at it again and resubmitted that. We also noticed that the contractor vendor performance was very closely monitored and tracked, and our recommendations are to continue to maximize that taxpayer value through the management of the RFQs, the Request for Quote process, that the staff is fulfilling. And we would also point out that the, the contractor symposiums were an excellent method. It was utilized to orient new contractors to what are the expectations of the district, what are the expectations in terms of timeline, delivery of services. It also gave the design professionals an opportunity to sit down and discuss with potential contractors what those expectations were, and we, we observed that that was a very good tool to help maximize the bang for the buck in terms of when the bids did come in. Our third charge was to review reports concerning the current status and the planned invitation of the Bond, and to determine whether or not that was consistent with the Bond's intent. And we found that it was. The facility construction efforts met the Bond's intent, the fine arts efforts met the Bond's intent, safety, security, and technology efforts met the Bond's intent, and the transportation efforts met the Bond's intent. We would recommend to continue to sustain the website presence that tracks and documents the process throughout all of our projects. We've noted that there's been an increase in the amount of visual pictures provided on websites. In some cases, that really helps to tell the tale of what's going on at a particular construction site, and we thought that was a very good improvement, increasing that. Charge number four for us was to review the Bond Program and how it was tracking the budgets, the encumbrances, the expenditures, and estimated costs. And over the past several years, the committee during the month of April has taken a look at what were the current expenditures and encumbrances, and plotted where we were. For example, on this chart here, if you were to take the overall Bond Program and divide it out by five years, you essentially get how much we should be spending per year, which is represented by the green dash line. That's kind of the, the glide slope per se of, you know, if you were doing an average spending, what you should be at. And what this tells us essentially is that we're really not that far off from where we need to be. In fact, it's nothing to worry about, because there is a process for soliciting the bids and then getting, you know, the, the work and following up with all of the expenditures. And I think that if we were significantly below the green line with our actuals, we, we might have some cause for concern, but we really don't. We think that we're on an achievable path for success, and that the district is doing a very good job of managing this project. We'd also like to point out that there were underperforming contractors from time to time that would be assessed and, and dealt with by the AISD staff, not only in a professional manner, but in such a way as to again maximize taxpayer dollar value for the projects. And we would offer the recommendation to continue to sustain those efforts to monitor and track and report those costs. We believe it is sufficient. Charge five for us is to review the hub utilization on facilities projects. We noted that as of April 2018, our hub utilization was about 17%, and that's the actual of what we would see. We have an interesting relationship, I think, with the staff, in that during some of our meetings, we would have discussions in terms of trying to understand really what's the situation going on in our district in terms of what's the availability of hub contractors, what's kind of the local area needs assessment. And when appropriate, I think the district has kind of taken the lead and gone out, and they have solicited local area disparity studies based on just some of the communications we've had in the meetings with them. And so I'd like to highlight really that they're listening very carefully and closely to our meetings and in our meetings, and making the appropriate adjustments and seeking information when we ask for it, without having to wait for me to come up in an annual report or without having to, you know, spend a whole lot of time, you know, reviewing it. If it's appropriate, they take action, and I'd like to note that, and that's definitely a compliment to the efforts of the, the staff. We would recommend also to consider doing a local area disparity, which I, as I mentioned, they've, they've already kind of initiated that process. And I'd like to point out too that we believe that the staff is doing a very good job of considering previous hub participation from vendors when considering new bids that they're going to let. And so basically, they're considering previous performance before they, you know, hand out a new contract to a vendor, seeing how their commitments are following through. It's definitely a consideration. The sixth charge that we have is to review the internal and external audits of the Bond Program to ensure that we have the adequacy of the scope, the administration's response to the audit, and any remediation efforts as applicable. We observed that there is an external audit scope identified for construction contract and billings, kind of the financial end of it, and that Peach, McNutt, CTC, Martin, et cetera have been identified for an external audit. Our recommendation would be to consider in addition to the financial audit, perhaps a spot check on vendor performance, kind of the quality check as opposed to just a budgeting finance. There may be an opportunity to look into that for your consideration. The seventh charge would be for us to review and provide input concerning the communications to the public regarding the Bond. Again, we would highlight that there have been tremendous efforts on the website, notably the pictures, et cetera. But we would also like to point out that we know that there have been some very specific efforts by the staff to go down and talk to teachers, principals, administrators, coaches in some cases, to explain some of the decisions, why things were happening, or to solicit input. We found that that was really beneficial in terms of giving a voice to the people who are going to be living and working these buildings, and we noted several of those communications is a good thing. Our recommendation would be to, to further develop some campus level down communication directives, perhaps providing talking points to principals and administrators that are specifically targeted not only to their teachers and staff, so that they have a clear idea of what's happening at their school, but also looking up, in some cases, the feeder schools, what's the junior high and the high school that an elementary school is feeding into to make sure that there's some alignment in terms of what's going on, but also to provide talking points for district personnel to understand kind of where we're at in different areas. We also would like to, to recommend that, I think there's an opportunity to leverage the CTC's audio/video capability. We observed basically a news channel-worthy television station, and we think that there might be some opportunity to use that and use the students participating in that to set up reports on Bond progress that could be put out on the website or broadcast through the public television. Very specific perhaps to a particular campus or a series of campuses, so we think there's, there's definitely an opportunity to go ahead and use that equipment. Let's get the, you know, the students in there teaching, perhaps interviewing some of the staff that are responsible for the conduct of the, the Bond, and, and get that involvement. So let's leverage those facilities if we can. We also think there's an opportunity to leverage the existing PTA and, and community partners in terms of providing them with talking points of what's the, the progress, so making a, a very discernible effort to communicate perhaps through the, you know, the local PTAs down to campus levels, hey, here's what's going on not only in your school, but your surrounding schools or across the district. Also think that there's an opportunity with our website to expand our bilingual outreach. So just as easily as we might be able to produce, you know, the news reports or, or so forth through our CTC capabilities, we could probably do that in Spanish or other languages as well. Be really interesting to see some of the Fine Arts Academies leveraging some of their language opportunities and, and providing, you know, updates as well. Our eighth charge was essentially to conduct visits throughout the district and observe the actual good work that's being done. We conducted onsite visits at the CTC, the Ag Center, and Duff Elementary School, and we observed the new construction going on and also existing campus renovations. Provided us some pretty good insights as to some of the challenges that older schools' facilities face in terms of going through the upgrade. We would recommend to continue to visit those new existing campus projects. So where there's an existing campus, the new projects are coming, let's continue to see those. And let's go back and spot check some of the previous locations that we've already seen before, just to make sure that they're weathering the storm as we would hope, that there aren't any, you know, potential construction issues that, you know, we, we think we're done, but we're really not done because something's not quite working as it should. We think there's also an opportunity to align the teachers and staff training with new facilities, for example STEM Labs. When the STEM Labs are built and available for use, making sure that there's synchronization with the training and support so that they can immediately start to utilize those STEM Labs in the manner in which they were intended. So perhaps there's some working with the curriculum development to leverage that, so there's really not any, there's not a whole lot of time between substantial construction completed and students in those facilities, you know, taking use of them. Our ninth charge was to agree by majority vote on all our findings and recommendations and present that to you, which we have. And when we couldn't necessarily get somebody in the room, we've reached out to them via email and solicited their input. And I would also note that this year, the SLAB participation was significantly better than the previous year. We had some tremendous support by the SLAB students. Not only came with their observations of what they saw at their home campuses, but were also able to speak to their siblings' experiences at other campuses as well. And observing that, we think that there's a possibility or an opportunity to perhaps reassess the, the SLAB charge and increase its membership, expand the participation to other students. They don't all necessarily have to be at the high school level, perhaps there are others that are interested, you know, at the student government levels, at, you know, junior highs or elementary schools that may have some interest, so for your consideration. Our 10th charge was to provide a report in a semi-annual or more frequent basis to the Board of Trustees. We have observed that really an annual report appears to be appropriate, and our recommendation would be to adjust that reporting frequency accordingly. I don't think we need to come and visit you twice a year right now. Certainly, we know the door is open if there is a problem, and in fact, many of you sit with us during our committee meetings, but might adjust that to kind of an annual outbrief. And we would like to sustain the Board Member presence at our CBOC meetings. We feel that that facilitates an informal discussion, gives them an idea of, will provide you all with an idea of what we're seeing, and I think provides a great opportunity for us to interact with the leadership of this district, and we appreciate that. Finally, our 10th charge was to coordinate with the superintendent or the superintendent's designate to maintain a presence on the AISD website. Certainly, our Bond materials are very easily accessed, but I'd like to point out that there's been a lot of work on that website to include dashboard reporting, et cetera, which were recommendations that came from this committee in previous years that helped to simplify and make easy to understand where we are in the progress and where we're going. We wanted to highlight those, those efforts as something that's very beneficial, and please sustain those and continue to develop that presence there. And again, consider leveraging your new technology capabilities at the CTC to help expand your audiovisual communications. So in summary, the next three slides, I basically rolled up for your review, all of our recommendations. I don't believe I need to belabor the point, but I would like to provide a special thanks to those members of the Board who spent a significant amount of time working with us. Dr. Rice, Keisha Mays, Polly, John Hibbs. Also would like to thank the tremendous staff, their efforts, Cindy Powell, Kelly Horn, Javier Fernandez, Chad Branham, Lynn Nguyen, Michael Stringer, Tim Collins, James Smith, Tony Drolinger, Craig Wright, Ginger Polster, Kyle Dur, and Cindy Harbison. All took a significant amount of their time out to educate us on what was happening either at their campuses or across the district. I cannot express again the level of professionalism demonstrated by your staff. I feel very comfortable with not only their performance and what they've been able to, you know, handle, but I'm truly amazed, this is a sign, this is significant bond, $663 million, and the level, level of dedication involved to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed is really exemplified by those fine people. So again, thank you. Like to recognize, if you're a CBOC member in the audience, please stand up briefly.[1683.00][1683.03][applause]
Subject to your questions, that's all I have. Well, that was quite a bit. Thank you for a, a great report. Personally, I, I love the, the layout, how you presented this report, going through every, every charge and the recommendations to really hit, hit on every one to make sure that you're meeting the charge and providing the recommendations. Thank you for that. We do have some questions. I'll start with Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, Mr. DeKime.
Hold on, that was my fault. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeKime. I too, I appreciate the presentation and how it was laid out. This Bond Committee year, we actually transferred you from one committee, which was the Citizens Oversight Committee, into, and, or, that was also the finance and academics was looking at your committee also, still under the, the role of the Citizens Bond Oversight and the Citizens Engagement Committee. So, you know, there could be some confusion that you've had a lot of different board members in and out, and, you know, I, I'm glad that it gave extra access. I noticed one of the recommendations was to encourage our involvement even more, which was under your recommendation, 10 of 11. To be honest with you, some of us are, was a little bit concerned that we didn't come to your meetings, and then all of a sudden, because of our prominence within the district, that we would take away- And then all of a sudden, because of our prominence, uh, within the district, that we would take away from anything that the administration, uh, was presenting to you. And then giving you the full ability to vet out, uh, these concerns and things rather than looking over to a board member. And, uh, potentially having them say, well, our real purpose here was, but really gaining more insight from you. So, uh, we will absolutely take that under advisement on that one. And, um, you know, we'll try to have, uh, a presence in the room. But again, um, I can, I think that I could s- speak on behalf of our, uh, my colleagues in the respect that we want to hear your voice. We, we, we've seen these things, but we want to make sure that you, the citizens are giving us back a impartial. Or not trying to repeat to something that you think we want to hear. We want to make sure. Uh, so I, as part of our charge, I want to make sure that you know this is y'all's committee. And, uh, it's important that we get, uh, the true pulse of the community here. You see things. You've got children in, within schools that are going under construction. Uh, you've seen delays, uh, you've, and it's very, very important that you can give us an unbiased feedback. Because, um, one of the other items that you, you spoke about, um, let me go back a couple of pages. And I appreciate this is under a recommendation too. You said, continue to maximize the taxpayer value through management of the, um, RFQs. Your committee had the privilege of being able to see that, uh, certain RFQs were pulled back. Uh, certain, uh, requests for, uh, uh, you know, to get our costs more in the line. Because between the time that we've got this bond passed and the time that, uh, we were a- able to get the different, um, phases. Into, um, a real working, uh, feet on the ground type of situation. Uh, costs across the state went crazy. I mean, some of the costs went up as much as thirty percent. And, uh, we also had, uh, bonds across the state that were passing. And so the, uh, our vendors, um, were bidding on a lot of different projects in a lot of different areas. And, and, um, it was good that we had your committee that could see that, understand that and also share that with the, the community. Because it's, it's hard for somebody if you have a child that's a, going into their senior year and they're waiting to have a, um, stage be completed. And it looked like it was supposed to, the early on, it was going to be cle- uh, uh, completed at the end of September. And now we're telling you February and a lot of people saying, well, we're missing some great opportunities for my child. And we, we have to understand that, um, but in the same way, we're trying to maximize the taxpayers', um, uh, position on this too. So, um, I appreciate that you put that in as one of your recommendations. Um, and I know that's not an easy thing because you, you, you know, y'all were looking at a lot of different things. Uh, the next thing over on, uh, charge seven of 11, um, I wholeheartedly agree with every one of those, uh, points. Uh, develop a campus level down communication directives. It's important, uh, that our leadership within the campus feels empowered to be able to go to, uh, the stakeholders. And share what's happening on their campus, alerting them that, hey folks, we may have a delay. Or, um, uh, we're going to have an inconvenience for a short amount of time. You know, maybe redirecting trucks into a, a site and, and we see those and we hear those. It may be, um, uh, some different removals of a certain hallway. We've seen all those things and, and, um, y'all's recommendation there of having it developed from a campus level communication. And I, I think that you're talking about, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you're talking about from the administrative, um, uh, principal, vice principal on the campus. Being able to get that information out to, um, the, um, uh, the populace, both the teachers and the parents. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, a brilliant idea on the CTC. Oh, I'm sorry, did you come?
And to that point, maybe not necessarily just the campus there, but the adjacent, you know, proximity campus.
Feeders.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Everything within that cluster. I think that's really important because me as a parent, if I've got a sixth grader and I know that they're moving into junior high. Or even to the high school and they see something going on there, it's important they know what that is. So I appreciate that. A brilliant idea on the CTC, uh, opportunity. And that can really even talk about what your last point was, the expansion of the bilingual outreach efforts. Uh, we, we've got students that are at that CTC center, uh, that speaks a variety of languages. And it would be very cool that each person have an opportunity to even have a podcast that they go to. It doesn't have to necessarily all run on our local TV, but there, there's podcasts that communities are directed to. Uh, so I think that, um, brilliant, uh, uh, recommendation. And then leveraging the PTAs, uh, wherever we have PTAs and we have them on the majority of campuses. Some we, we would have to continue to educate, uh, either through parents, university or some different opportunities.
Or, or the community partnership.
Yeah.
The, uh, the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club.
Absolutely.
Is a great example. Maybe there's not a strong PTA there, but there's an interface with the parents readily available. That if they have good information, they can pass that on to the parents and students as well.
Great. And, and we have that with the, uh, with the YMCA and also Salvation Army too, right? So I think that you're, you guys, um, I think hit home runs with the ones that I, I pointed out. I think all of them were very good, but those are the ones that rise to the top. And I, again, I just, uh, so appreciate your committee. Um, uh, this is, uh, something that, uh, you know, we're, we're, um, in that final phase, uh, with the bonds. So the, uh, the huge amount of construction and things that we had before, um, aren't quite as active. But we do have some pretty exciting things coming on with our performing arts center, our auditorium and, uh, sports facility. Um, that's over by ATT Stadium. Uh, we still have, uh, a number of individual campus, uh, projects, uh, that are in place. So, uh, I just, you were placed on those committees, uh, purpose, purposefully, sorry, I can't speak tonight. And, uh, we appreciate every bit that you give. So with that, I, you know, give back the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hibbs. Uh, great words, uh, and comments. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, President Reich. Thank you, Mr. DeKane. I appreciate the report. Thank you for our members who are here and able to attend this evening and thank you for your service. Um, truly, truly, wholeheartedly appreciate it. Um, I'm going to make my comments very brief, but there's two things that I just want to say. I really, he took off, he took all my time. Um, that I really, really like what I see. And number one is just the composition, the makeup of the members. Um, I am very proud to be able to sit here and read all the different backgrounds for the people who are participating on this. To make sure that we are getting information, thoughts and buy-ins from people throughout the entire community, no matter what their background. Um, second, um, on your charge number nine about increasing and expanding our student participation. I really like that request as well because once again, they're the ones that are actually experiencing these new facilities that we're building, the new things that we're adding. Um, I still love to hear my son come home and said, mom, so and so said, thank you for that weight equipment or, you know, however they say it. But they also come and say, why did y'all do that? We don't even use that. So I love getting feedback from the students. So I really like this idea. And I, I, I really want to see what it looks like to continue to expand this because I, I also agree that I think that will be very positive. So just the one question that I have is for charge number five. If you could just kind of expand a little bit on exactly what that proposal request for hub consulting services includes?
So, we think that before we can really sit down and consider what is our, a, a hub target for this area. Before we can really hold ourselves to a standard, uh, we need to understand the environment that we're operating in. And we need to understand what is the availability of contractors and hub participation in the area. And we may find through a local area study that, uh, we either are or are not, uh, leveraging to the extent that's available. And, you know, certainly it would make no sense for us to attempt to hold ourselves to a seventy-five percent standard if that's just not there. The, the reality is, I think that until we really know for sure the environment that we're in or have some, some good idea, uh, it's hard to nail down a target. Or it's hard to kind of say, here, we're doing good or not. But I would like to emphasize that for sure, without a doubt, this staff is paying very close attention to that. And that is a significant component of every, uh, RFQ that they review, every bid that they proceed with, every contract that is let. And so don't take that recommendation in any way to, you know, be perceived as, well, we're not looking. I mean, they're doing a phenomenal job. I think what we're recommending is, hey, let's, let's find out about the truth of, you know, uh, can you tell me how many contractors are really in Arlington specifically? And of what types? Can you tell me how many are in, within a twenty-five mile radius? You know, realistically, those would be the guys showing up at six in the morning to, you know, do the construction. What, what is the available pool of talent for architects and engineers and professionals? Let's get an idea before we try to decide, hey, we're going to hold ourselves to a particular standard and, or, or at least proceed that way. That, that was the intent of the comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Hogg, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Uh, Mr. DeKane, thank you. Sorry I walked in late. I just got off an airplane and told you I'd be here by eight and it was like seven fifty-four. So, uh, I consider myself early tonight. Um, Mr. DeKane, thank you. And let me, let me thank the rest of the board. This bond oversight committee is not required in essence. This is something our board chooses. It, in the past, has been a huge help when things have to change in a bond. Because the worst thing we could do is, is this is passed in 2014, say, that's what we're sticking with and we're making no changes, no matter what. So, um, Mr. DeKane, yourself and all the colleagues on the board, thank you, um, for doing that because it does help us transition, keep more checks and balances of what's happening. And honestly, it allows us to have a little more discussion around student achievement instead of just buildings, um, which sometimes boards get caught up in buildings. It's, they're nice. Shiny new things are nice, but, um, focus on student achievement. So I thank you guys. One question I do have, and, and this, not officially sure if it's with the CBOC, but I think the CBOC could do this. Um, we do hear from contractors. They sometimes like to complain when they don't win something, when they do win something, or what could be done better in a bid. Do we, has your committee or, or Mr. Horn or anyone discussed possibly cert- you know, we use a lot of surveys in this district and they've become very effective for positive feedback. Um, I know one of the contractors, overarching organizations, um, had a conversation with me and I think they've approached a couple of others of, they think there's some things we could do better in bids, things of those nature. Have we ever surveyed all the contractors? Because some of their feedback was, listen, your partners are contractors and they're truly our partners because they're critical to what we're doing. Sometimes don't want to come out and say, hey, this was a really poor process of how it's done. So sometimes surveys give them that, um, that, that, I can't even talk. Ominity? Ominity. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Um, taken after, uh, Hibbs is telling me how to pronounce something. That's, that's scary on the whole side of it. Um, it's just the thought process, Mr. Horn or, or Mr. DeKane, is, is that something that CBOC would be able to utilize to see if we're fulfilling, um, different things? Could we be doing bids differently? Is there a better way to s- to sustain and work with our partners who are contractors?
Well, first I would say that it, it's not something that we've, our committee has specifically reviewed. I think that there's potentially an opportunity under kind of the audit charge, the external audit, to encompass the, the survey technique to, to see, you know, what they would have to say. But I think you'd have to, you'd have to figure out what you want to know first. You need to kind of identify, what are those, those key pieces of information I'm trying to learn about, you know, how the district is performing and how they're performing first. And then from that, make a decision on whether it makes sense to produce a survey that answers those questions. Um, I'm not aware of any specific contractor dialogue back and forth. Frankly, uh, we're aware that that happens, that has been reported to us, but not in any specificity. So I would defer to.
Yeah, and, and Mr. DeKane, they, sometimes they like to complain a lot and there's a lot not to it sometimes. Um, I found that out, but I, I don't know, just, you know, the idea was, was surveys and I know we've done a lot with that to find our partners. So that when we bid, um, things have done better. I know, Mr. Horn and I have had some discussions. People said, you could do this better when you're working through with the, uh, with encore to make the process faster. Things that supposedly slow down projects. And as they've said, um, cash flow is definitely one of the discussions that's been, um, contractors have said, we're slow on our payments. Um, I know we've had many discussions over that and sometimes they're not willing to be really vocal, um, and say that. Because they are afraid it hurts their reputation, um, doing business with the district. And I understand that. Listen, I, I try not to complain to my clients, um, too much, um, when I'm working with them on those type of things. So that's where I think, and Mr. Horn, maybe it's not, maybe it's something y'all work and then just report it to CBOC or something of that nature to make us better. Or maybe it's not a CBOC and just an internal piece. I just kind of wanted to throw it out there, uh, for staff and, and possibly CBOC to think about of how we really work with our partners, which are our contractors, to make the bid process better. Because if, right now, unfortunately, um, most contractors have their choice of what they get to bid on. Business is really good for them, so, so we have to make sure we're someone they work with. Because if we do make it difficult, they sometimes all just start marking up their price on little pieces because they know certain things are coming in. Um, the cash flow is the perfect thing. If, if we're delayed and we've had, I've had many discussions with staff. If we're slow on payments, um, and they're having to pay subs now ninety days out and they're having to cash flow, it, it does. They'll add a, they'll add a half percent or so to their cost to hopefully help them cover those type of things. So I just throw that out for kind of just a, not looking for an answer or solution, but just train a thought of, of possibly what the CBOC could also look at. And those are survey results. Maybe they're internal or maybe they go CBOC for initial review. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hogg. I, I, uh, I agree that, uh, there is, uh, definitely some merit to consider some type of a, a survey process. Uh, and that's not necessarily anything that just you and I, but if the, the rest of the board, just by show of nod, if you think that's something for staff to maybe consider and look at. Uh, uh, certainly I think there's, uh, there's value, uh, and it's consistent with the rest of our processes, with our other stakeholders in the district. So, I, I've got, seems like a couple of nods. Ms. Mays, maybe, maybe not. Just for staff to consider.
I think what staff would do.
Yes.
Could be something else to it.
Very good. And, and on that note, I think that's a perfect segue to what else I was going to say. Uh, is with all of these recommendations, uh, staff has heard some of our, uh, my colleagues, uh, emote specific recommendations that they're very much in favor for or of. And to be consistent with our other, uh, uh, our process, our normal process with, uh, committees that do make recommendations to the board. Uh, it is, uh, typical where the staff will go through and vet those recommendations, uh, give us feedback on those recommendations. And I, I think that that's probably the best way to go about this process as well. Uh, so if, uh, if we can, uh, make sure that that is accomplished so that we can then circle back at another meeting and, and really go through each of those recommendations. And, and consider that formally as a board. So I think that'll, that'll work. Uh, so just a couple of questions, uh, and just to make sure I don't see any other lights, so I, I don't want to jump in front of anybody. Okay, so, uh, the, uh, I, just a couple of comments, I, and, and clarification. One of the recommendations specific to doing a, a, besides the financial, uh, check on, analysis on vendors, the quality check, uh, spot check on projects. Do we not have project managers in place, uh, that you're aware of? And maybe Ms. Powell, if she needs to provide clarification, uh, in place to do that already, uh, in, in, in our processes in the district?
The, the, the point was external auditing, so I believe there are internal controls in place by the district?
Okay, 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 great. And then, uh, I, I do appreciate that the, uh, the conversation around the, the, the hub, uh, targets, goals, uh, wha- whatever approach we're going to have. With a, uh, uh, an RFP, I assume is out, uh, for consultants. What, what's our timeline look like? Because we've. Because we've had, had this discussion related to coming to a determination for quite some time now, so-
Right, so, um, we have issued an RFP, and we've received, uh, responses. And so, we've got a committee of folks that will be reviewing those responses, uh, evaluating them, and then bringing in, uh, several of those firms for interviews. And our goal is to come back by the end of June and, uh, and bring the board a, a recommendation.
Okay, okay. And one more question related to that. I, I know there, there's been, uh, some such, some touch points that I've had where, uh, people have said, uh, besides the, uh, the, the subs, uh, for hub, uh, what about prime vendors as they are hub firms, as, you know, prime vendors? Will that be something that this, uh, uh, consultant, is that part of the RFP to include? Or is that something that can be worked into to assess that as well?
Right, so it wasn't specifically in the RFP, but that is something that very generally, uh, would be a conversation we would have with them, um, as, as we begin to evaluate what, uh, opportunities are there for us in order to solicit hub participation. That particular issue is one that we had some significant conversation about even, uh, when we were first creating the bond program and how to go about soliciting, uh, architects and contractors. Uh, and we had that conversation internally and then also with, um, the consulting firm that helped us, uh, map out all of our projects and put together the RFQs themselves. We really, we, at the moment, feel very comfortable that, uh, by asking all of the firms to tell us about their, uh, their commitment for that tier two or their subcontractor participation, that that allows, uh, probably us to, to, uh, cast a, a broader net, uh, across all, uh, types of vendors, uh, smaller vendors too, uh, who can participate in the projects. And it puts the expectation squarely and equally on every one of our contractors about here's, here's our expectations, that, uh, that tier two level, which is where the bulk of the dollars are spent, actually, on any project, is where the subs, more so than the prime. Uh, so that's, that's a little bit about how we got there, uh, to begin with.
So, just to clarify from my understanding, so if, if there is a, a, a hub, uh, certified prime vendor on, on the, uh, the scorecard process, uh, would they automatically get all of those points and have a higher because they have a much higher level of minority participation as a prime vendor?
They actually don't get any. All the points are awarded based on the commitment for what we call tier two or the subcontractor participation.
Okay.
And again, that's where the dollars are spent with any construction, uh, project. The bulk of the dollars are with those subs. Uh, the general contractors get fees, but the bulk of the dollars for materials and labor and what have you are spent with subs.
Okay. And would this, uh, would this consultant be able to weigh in on that to give us, uh, more, more guidance on, uh, our process to validate that that is, that the best approach? And, and I say that just as I started this because I, I have had touch points, saying that, well, wait a minute, there's a difference if you got a prime hub versus the tier two.
Right. And, and so absolutely, yes, we'll have that conversation with them, um, as we move into the details of, um, working with a particular consultant.
Okay. Did you have a question related to that, Ms. Mays?
Yeah, I, I-
Hold on. Go, go right ahead, if I-
Thank you. Yes, I, I did. And, and I remember asking that question before, and your answer was the same. You're looking at that tier two and not necessarily for the company itself. Um, but my question is, as y'all move forward in this process, um, how involved, um, would the board be in knowing exactly where you're going? And I'll just make it as, as clear as I can. Uh, I, my thought process is, first of all, what would the cost be? Um, second is, what's the real purpose of what we're really trying to get out of the consulting firm to tell us that we may not already know? I mean, for instance, if they're saying, here's the percentage of what hub participation has looked like in the Arlington or the DFW area, what does that mean? What are we going to do with that information? Does that, does that mean we're not going to look outside still to find those hubs? And I guess I just want to make sure that we stay focused on what we said that we were going to try to do, and that is find a true target rate. We're not saying it's a goal, but that true target rate, when it seems like we already have a lot of that information. So I'm just kind of wanting to kind of really understand, what are we expecting to get out of this consulting firm? And how much money are we willing to spend to get some information that I think historically we already have?
So, that, that's a real good point about the cost. Um, and that's something that we're finding, um, when we ask responders to tell us what their price would be. First of all, we do, we split the work into kind of two different pieces. The first phase, uh, is we wanted someone to help us, uh, with data analysis, uh, reporting hub participation back, and helping us, uh, do some research to determine, um, what, uh, what we can do perhaps, um, short of doing or participating in a disparity study, simply because those are extraordinarily expensive. Those are close to a million dollars, okay? Um, and so, uh, want to have that conversation first. If then, after bringing the information back to the board, the board determines with us that, yes, that, uh, we think that we can set a particular target, uh, then we'll have that conversation, bring that back to the board, and then have that consultant help us with outreach. And actually, I think outreach may be included in the first phase of work. But then, uh, helping us in continuing to cultivate, uh, that, uh, that hub participation and continuing to report the information back. Uh, and, uh, helping us implement a structure around an entire hub, um, like you said, a, a, a policy or practice for the board. Um, so we've kind of split it into two pieces. We asked them to tell us how they, how much they would charge on that first piece of work. And what we've gotten back is several different formats. Some of them have given us a flat fee, some have given us a, an hourly rate. And so, one of the things that we have to do as part of this process is go back to each of those, uh, proposers and, and ask them all very specifically to give us unit pricing, if you will. We'll probably put everybody on an hourly rate and have them submit that to us so that we can evaluate everyone, uh, consistently.
Okay. And then my last question is, would this go through any of the committees that we have? And which committee would that be?
Finance.
Finance. And, and we've had some conversation with them, uh, about this, um, last month or so.
Sure. Okay, very good. So, uh, thank you for that information. I really appreciate it. Uh, one, one final question, uh, related to the, uh, the, the, the graph and the, the line that shows trending that we're going to be okay, uh, with this project despite all of the challenges, uh, with cost of materials, inflation, uh, the marketplace, uh, driving , uh, cost up, uh, because of supply and demand issues. Um, has there been any, any talk about, in order to keep that graph where it is and, and on target, uh, about any, any potential projects that had been, uh, promised to different campuses being canceled because we're, if we do everything that we thought we were going to do at the beginning, we're going to be over? Or are we still good? And that might be for you, it might be for Ms. Powell. Uh, I just want to make sure that we are, uh, the promises that we've made, the expectations for all the campuses, they're, they're still able to, that with all the delicate balance that, it's, it's not that we're making it because we're actually cutting some and we're going to hope to put it into a, another, uh, bond or something.
So, I- Periodically, our staff, um, makes projections on the bond program as a whole. We go through all the projects and determine where we are. The further we get into the bond program, uh, the better outlook we have because the more projects we actually have contracts on and have, or have completed or are in process with a contract. So we have more certainty on more of the work that is taking place at this point. Um, we feel still very good that we're going to come out about even right now. Um, and that does not even take into account interest earnings on the bond proceeds while we hold them. Uh, so, we feel confident now, we still have, um, we, we are about to start issuing, uh, invitations for proposals on the phase four work. And so, probably by August, we'll know pricing on those projects. And then we still have the phase five work, which is going to be bid probably, uh, late this fall. And so, I think by the end of this calendar year, we'll have a real good sense, uh, you know, all the projects will have had contracts issued. Um, again, what we think we know, uh, we're having to work very hard of it. Uh, Mr. Horn and his staff spend a tremendous amount of time, uh, scrubbing drawings along with architects and contractors, uh, to look for every opportunity we have, uh, or can find, uh, to, to do things more efficiently, uh, and ensure that we stay as close to our budgets as we can. Um, and so, you know, I applaud them. I mean, they spend a tremendous amount of time doing that. Um, and, and it is one project at a time. So I think we're going to be okay. This is certainly a way different story than the two thousand nine bond program where, um, the market was down and we got wonderful pricing on all of our jobs, uh, throughout the five years and had a, a good amount of surplus dollars left that we were able to use for other similar purposes. This is a way different market. And, and, and so, um, and, and, and it's good for all of us for a lot of reasons, but, uh, but it is something that, uh, that is a challenge, but I think we feel like we're going to be okay on this.
And, oh, and, yeah, absolutely. There's, uh, no question, the amount, the amount of watching and scrubbing and work, it's, it's very noticeable, I, I think, to me, and I'm sure for my colleagues at our level as well. Uh, so with that said, uh, would it be on the table if, when you're getting those phase four, uh, uh, contracts in, or then, I, I guess, i- i- is it possible for those that are at the, at the end, uh, the, the campuses, the different improvements that, that are slated now, is it possible that some of those might have to not get implemented because of cost? Or are we pretty sure that we're going to be able to?
I'm, I'm pretty sure we won't be facing that. I will also say that from day one, when we sat and, and sequenced out the work, we left administrative office buildings for last.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I, I would not anticipate, I do not anticipate that there is going to be any school where we have to say, I'm sorry, we can't do that at all. I, I do not anticipate that at all.
Good.
Uh, but, um, I, again, I think we're going to be okay, but, and we do it project by project and looking at the scope and making sure we don't have scope creep, uh, making sure that, uh, we're all comfortable with the, uh, types of equipment and materials that are being used and, and just look for every possible opportunity to, to, um, reduce our costs a little bit. And it's something that has been working, and, uh, and, and so I think we'll get through all of them.
That's wonderful. And, yeah, one hundred percent, the, the amount of work that, and diligence, uh, that the capacity that you have in, in, in human resource to look through all of this and vet all of this, uh, with the scope and magnitude of ninety-nine, a hundred-plus projects going on at the same time, to have your eyes and ears on all of those, to do just what you said is, is remarkable. Uh, and that, as we've said in the past, uh, that is so commendable. Uh, you, you guys do an amazing job. Uh, when we see things in the media of, uh, other districts I won't mention where they literally have just three or four projects and they're in the media because they're in trouble. Uh, you guys are holding down an incredibly complex large fort. So, thank you very much for that. And, uh, so with that, I would say, and that's all. You, you can rest. Uh, Mr. DeKane, uh-
Great, rest.
Thank you. Uh, the, 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 your, your work and, and to the committee members that are here, uh, it takes a lot of time. You guys have gone through an amazing learning curve over time. You are tenured, uh, you're seasoned, uh, you get it. And part of the reason that we are on target is because of your work, uh, because of your, your eagle eye watching it. Uh, and that's really the purpose when we put together that we were going to have a, a CBOC, uh, in general. Uh, you're, you're absolutely meeting the charge. Thank you very much, on behalf of our entire Arlington community and taxpayers, uh, that voted for this bond, and even those that did not. Thank you for your, your great work. So, I, again, round of applause for you guys. And with that, you may rest as well. We will continue on with our agenda. Uh, moving on, uh, public hearings listed next. We do not, we do not have a public hearing. Moving to open forum for agenda items, I do not see any cards, no cards, so we will continue on. Uh, next on our agenda will be action items. Um, the first one of which, item A, uh, there is no action being taken on this item at this time by the Board of Trustees, so we can just, uh, move right on to item B, which is to consider the resolution in honor of the hundred and fortieth anniversary of First United Methodist Church of Arlington. And I have a resolution that I'm going to read, uh, into the record as a, uh, in the form of a motion. And, uh, it, this is quite remarkable, uh, for those that have not, uh, known this. Uh, so that this, uh, coming weekend is the hundred and fortieth, uh, anniversary celebration for First United Methodist Church in Arlington. And as the Board of Trustees, uh, our resolution is, whereas the First United Methodist Church of Arlington was formed in eighteen seventy-eight, af- a year after the city was established by a group of people who began meeting in their homes and in the offices of Schultz Lumber Company, and whereas they bought land at the corner of Center and Division Streets in eighteen eighty-four and built their first church, a wooden structure, in eighteen eighty-five, and whereas fire destroyed that church in nineteen eighteen, but a new church was built immediately on the same foundation, and whereas the church's membership grew along with the city, and today the church is five thousand members strong. And whereas, members of the First United Methodist Church of Arlington have been active in the AISD over the span of decades. And, this is amazing, whereas thirty-five members have had AISD schools or facilities named after them for their service to the district and Arlington community as early as nineteen fifty-four to as recent as twenty sixteen. Quite remarkable. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees officially celebrates and recognizes Sunday, May twentieth, eighteen, twenty eighteen, as the hundred and fortieth anniversary of the First United Methodist Church of Arlington. And this is signed by all of us, uh, sitting up here on this dais, the seventeenth day of May, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, with this resolution, there is a list of all of the namesakes, uh, that have, uh, been First United Methodist members honored with that distinction. And, uh, it's quite an impressive list of thirty-five of our school's namesakes, uh, from First United Methodist. So, I, I move, uh, that the Board approve this resolution. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Bill.
All right, a second by Ms. Walton. Uh, any, any discussion from colleagues? All right, uh, let's please vote then. Resolution passes by all trustees present, one hundred percent. And that, uh, resolution will be presented to First United Methodist Church, uh, on this Sunday, uh, in Arlington, uh, by, uh, members of the Board. Uh, and I think Mr. Hibbs will be, uh, presenting that. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Okay, now, at this time, we're going to change things up just a little bit. Uh, before proceeding to our next agenda item, uh, the Board is going to take a brief recess. We're going to go into closed session. Uh, this will be pursuant to sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two, and five-five-one-point-zero-eight-three of the Texas Government Code, and we will reconvene into open session shortly. Uh, thank you. We will return. The time is now ten oh nine. I call this meeting back into open session, and there were no, no action taken- I call this meeting back into open session, and there were no action taken in closed session. So we will now continue on to the next part of our agenda, which is Discussion/Action: Consider the 2017, 2018, 2019 Student Code of Conduct after your process.
Thank you, President Rice. And tonight, we'd like to bring as a Discussion/Action item our 2018, 19 Student Code of Conduct. And this has gone through the Code of Conduct Committee and has had input from a variety of stakeholders. And we covered this with the Governance Committee, and we've provided red-line versions of it, and still even some more input from our administration at the campus level. And so Mr. Hill will give an overview of where we stand with all the input in terms of our recommendation for the Code of Conduct. Mr. Hill.
So, good evening, Dr. Cavassos, Board members, Dr. Rice. Again, we're here to just go over the brief overview of the Student Code of Conduct, which is an annual presentation. Basically, we bring a committee together and we look at the Student Code of Conduct through Board Policy AE Local, which talks, which discusses, the Board believes that the school environment impacts the achievement of students. And so we want to look at the Student Code of Conduct through that lens as we go through it. The process, Campus Administration, Central Administration, teachers, parents, students, met over probably the last three months to review proposed changes for the upcoming year Student Code of Conduct. I'm going to give you a brief overview. You've had an opportunity to look at the details. What we'll talk about here is an overview of some of the changes, not the specifics, because it gets kind of wordy. But these first set of slides deal with changes that were recommending for alignment with the law. And this comes from legal, this comes from TASB, this comes from special ed and all. And so this is just briefly alignment with the law. A lot of conversation about bullying and cyberbullying, clarifying the right of the district to search students and what that process looks like, identifying the Title IX coordinator in the book, in the Code of Conduct, provide more details about the due process and what the definition is for due process, clarifying provisions for issuing criminal trespass warnings for inappropriate behavior on campuses, and providing other options for reporting bullying through Crime Stoppers and things of that nature for students. Added language related to encouraging one to commit suicide as a violation. And again, all of these come from alignment with the law. Added language related to threatening to use a firearm as a violation of the Student Code of Conduct, changed, and this is out of the law, the word "illegal" to a "location-restricted" knife, and that comes straight out of the code. Clarification of the required information for directory publications of students, that's a requirement that we have to let parents know in the Student Code of Conduct, and we clarified that. Clarified information on suspensions of students in Grade K through 2. Clarified services available for students who are having learning difficulties and who to contact. Clarified requirements for timeliness associated with parents' requests for special ed in 504. Provided additional resources for parents with disabilities. And again, all of these were informative and aligned with what's required by the law. Some administration recommendations from input from Campus Administration and Central Administration, clarified what's, what can and can't happen during student searches, clarification on student parking expectations and privileges, clarify student participation while in DAEP and what's allowed and what's not allowed. Provided expectations for students who are issued district-owned technology, and some other minor tweaks regarding subject verb agreement. We also had some conversation with the committee, and we are looking at relaxing the dress code for students at the high school level in a couple of areas, specific to the high school level, but not the junior high level. And so you've had a copy of that to kind of review as well. And so with that, administration recommends that we, that you approve the Student Code of Conduct that is presented with the recommendation and the adjustments that you see into the dress code. Will entertain questions or discussion.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have some questions. First, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And while not fully unanimous, we do have some items to bring about. I think the staff for this, I always wish sometimes Student Code of Conduct, listen, y'all all know, I wish we were all uniforms the whole time across the district. So that's my whole different belief. I know I'll lose that one. But that's the one I would, I would go completely uniform 100%, but that's a discussion, I think, that occurred seven years ago on this board, from that perspective. I also wish sometimes the Code of Conduct, we could let each school set their own Code of Conduct, and I still think going to that, allowing that. But with that, Governance Committee review, and I would be more than willing to make a motion, I think there's going to be a couple of tweaks on it of coming up, but I would make a motion to accept this Code of Conduct on staff's recommendation with the piece on that of saying, "Code of Conducts are built by principals' request. Things occur in the past, and principals request it." Mr. Hill, we've talked about this many times in your past. While we think something can be very clear, principals usually request these things to be placed in there to make it very, very clear. The example I was using in the past was tall tees, when that was a major issue within the district. It's no longer in there anymore, but it was an issue at that year and that time to make those exposed. So with that, I'd make a motion to accept the district's staff's recommendations for the Student Code of Conduct for 2018, 19.
Okay. So there's a motion. Of course, we'll have additional discussion. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hibbs. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. This is a Discussion/Action item, so we can continue. Did you have additional comments? You're just seconding the motion?
I can hold off on the comments.
Okay. Okay. See light, well, anything else, Mr. Hogg? Okay, I just want to be respectful of everybody. Mr. Chapa.
I would like to move to amend the motion that has just been made to accept this staff's recommendation of the Code of Conduct in full, however, deleting Sections 2A and 3C of this Student Dress Code.
Mr. Chapa, is he on page number?
On the, it's on page 60 of the version I've got.
And so your request for amending that motion is to remove those two? Is that correct? I believe the, tired, I believe the maker of the motion has to accept that? No? Just have to have a second?
I'm ready to.
Okay.
I'm ready to. I'm ready to second this amendment.
Okay, so, got it. Mr. Chapa's?
I second Mr. Chapa's amendment.
All right. All right. So we have an amendment to the original motion, so we can have discussion around that and then vote on that amendment. So I'm opening it up if there's discussion, otherwise we can go right to a vote.
I'd like to have a discussion.
Mr. Hibbs.
Mr. Hill, in the conversations that you had with parents, teachers, administrators, basically all the members of your specific committee, where was the committee's standpoint? Did you speak specifically about this area of shirts and blouses and, I guess those are the two points, and then dresses and skirts and scorts?
So, thank you, Mr. Hibbs. So, the committee kind of took the document from cover to cover in the initial round, and that didn't really rise to...
Rises to the occasion.
Conversation.
Okay, so the conversation, as it took place, there was, from a committee's standpoint, and if the committee can maybe add into this, the committee came back and had further discussion after the Board reviewed this. And I'm asking all the members of the committee here.
Yeah, that's right, Mr. Hibbs. And then we asked staff to go back to the principal.
Okay, so, when it went, okay.
Just to the staff, just to administrator staff.
To the administrator's staff. And then administrator's staff, and we've seen emails that went into the superintendent that was copied to the rest of the Board after the fact. So it was coming back from the administration. Just want to make sure that's clear for Thomas purposes. And the responses back that we were getting, as I understand, is that the junior high, and this is what we're talking about specifically, junior high, that if we make this change, we make it for all, not just for junior high. But the junior high principals have come back and showed their reservations, whether it be of point and detail, or it was just, you know, these have given us certain guidelines. And I know that some of these different things could be covered under other policies that we have, such as midriffs, such as revealing neckline, those type of things. So I guess where I fall on this, in my concern with the amendment, and I, I have no problem in saying, okay, do we have uniformity here? I don't want to take the opportunity for our administrators. We say they are the admirals on their campus, they're the captains of their ship, basically. And they know, because they come into a direct, face-to-face with the students on a daily basis, and they understand probably better than this Board does the challenges that they face. And I don't want to limit, if it was just one or two, it would be a different subject. But with the majority of our junior high principals and our administrators coming back and saying, "We believe these guidelines, as they are currently, helps us enforce our Student Code of Conduct," it takes out some anonymity that may be there. It would be, at least in this Board member's opinion, like taking away an opportunity for them to lead their campus in a direction that they think is right. And it's coming from a majority of our trustees. So I would be myself personally against this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Rice. And I appreciate the comments that Mr. Hibbs just made, and I also think that the amendment is completely in line with the feedback that we got from the junior high principals. Just to give some background to, because not everybody has a copy of this Code of Conduct in front of them, Sections 2A and 3C of the Student Dress Code, read in context with the other sections, essentially boils down to targeting exposed shoulders. So we're not talking about dress that might be so low that it exposes on a female student cleavage, because we have a separate provision in the Student Code of Conduct for cleavage. There's discussion in Section 2A of tube tops, and sometimes tube tops can be too short in the midsection. And we, the Student Code of Conduct has a specific provision on the showing of midriff, so that's also covered under that provision as well. So when this discussion came up in committee, the consensus of the committee was to get feedback from the junior high principals. And so what we have in front of us are three sections now that we have essentially, in the administration's proposal, would create a carve-out just for the junior highs, and that would be Sections 1B, 2A, and 3C. As to the Section 1B, which deals with form-fitting garments such as spandex or leggings and also yoga pants, this feedback from the junior high principals was highly specific and could, and described in some detail the specific problems that they are having with that dress. And so, you know, whether I feel that that's rightly or wrongly, I respect that feedback. And as to Section 1B, I have no problem creating that carve-out, recognizing that there are 11 other grades for which students would be allowed to wear that dress. As to Sections 2A and 3C, however, recognizing that they are covered by other provisions, and also recognizing that administrators always have the inherent authority to address a distraction to the classroom environment, whether it is specifically enumerated in a Code of Conduct or not, I don't feel like this takes away from the administrator's authority at all. What it does is it creates a presumption that clothing that, and I'm a parent of young girls, and many other members of the Board are too, that is ubiquitous. It's widespread on our campuses. We had members of the high school student bodies tonight who were here, who are student leaders on their campus, who were wearing clothing that skates very closely to the specific restrictions that I'm asking us to remove. And so you could go on to many elementary, junior high, or high school campuses, you could go to high school proms, you could go to weddings, you could go to formal events, and the showing of an exposed shoulder is not considered a controversial thing. And so I think that our Student Code of Conduct has to be updated from time to time to reflect that things have changed. And I think that these are two provisions that, while they may have served a purpose at one time, are a bit antiquated. And so the specific feedback that we got from the junior high principals, I was hoping to get something like we got back on the Section 1B, that a specific incident maybe where having a restriction to give advance notice that an exposed shoulder could create a problem, is in fact happening on our campuses, and that's not what we got. The feedback that we got from the junior high principals, even though we asked a couple times in different ways, and still stated a very high level of generality, and when something did approach a specific concern, it was almost always within the realm of something that's already addressed under the Student Code of Conduct and would remain there. They have issues maybe with cleavage, they have a concern that students might be distracted by the exposed shoulder and create a disruption in the classroom, which is independently, you know, conduct that's sanctionable under the Code of Conduct. There were concerns expressed about students maybe pulling down tops, female students, whether intentionally or not. And that's also conduct that would unintentionally, you know, be sanctionable independently under the Code of Conduct. And so what we're left in there was sort of a generic fear of, these things are there, we like having them in our toolkit, but in my point of view, and I very, I appreciate Mr. Hogg and Mr. Hibbs' concern with second-guessing what our administrators think is the best thing to do on their campuses, but in light of not having a specific example given of how an exposed shoulder could create a classroom, a distraction to the classroom environment, and also understanding that administrators, even if these provisions were removed, would always have the authority to address a distraction to the classroom environment. I think that we should err on the side of making this type of clothing, which is accepted widespread by society, also acceptable on our campuses. And I think there's a value in that as well, of removing the, in the sense that because these provisions are here, we need to enforce them when it may be a solution in search of a problem. Because my sense of what's happening on campuses day-to-day currently is that there are many students who are violating these two provisions, and yet nothing's being done. And the reason nothing's being done is because it is in fact not creating a distraction to the classroom environment. And so that is a side that I would rather err on, and that is the sentiment that's animating my amendment. And I'd appreciate the Board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, for those words. Mrs. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just want to make two more points that are concern of mine. Teachers in the classrooms are responsible for enforcing the dress code, and sometimes it's a real hard choice for a teacher to make, whether remove the student from the class where they need to be learning, or, you know, is the exposed shoulder really, you know, worth that child missing that class? So I know if I were that teacher, I would err on keeping the kid there and giving them the instruction that they need. I think it kind of, we kind of hedged a little bit around that these two codes, or whatever dress codes, are not being enforced equitably from teacher to teacher, from campus to campus. So it makes me question why they're here. And I do want to make one. And I do want to make one other point. I urge the board to make a decision on this so that parents this summer, when these changes, you know, they need to be making aware of these changes so that this summer, when they're doing their back-to-school shopping, that they are aware of what the changes have been. So those are my comments, and I urge you to consider this carefully.
All right. I have a clarification, I guess, that I need. So the motion, the amended motion, or amendment to the original motion that's on the table is to strike 2A and 3C from page 60. And, right, right, I understand. My additional clarification is that specific to a certain level of school, high school versus junior high? That's across the board, take it out completely? Is that?
No. It's the way it's listed. Is that's going to strike?
Probably.
Mr. Chapa, if I heard you correctly, you're asking to strike 2A and 3C. So then those would not be included in the code of conduct. So we vote on that. If it passes, then we'll strike it, and then it'll come back to my motion.
Right.
We approve it with that amendment. If it fails, then we go back to my motion as is originally written.
Right. Yeah, I'm just making sure, because Mr. Hill mentioned junior high versus high school. I'm just making sure that that's, is that part of your recommendation of motion?
We're not talking about that, Dr. Reich. We're talking about 2A and 3C.
Okay.
All we're doing is voting on striking 2A and 3C.
Well, no, I understand that. I'm talking after this. I'm just trying to make.
We'll get to that once we vote on this amendment.
All right. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Chapa.
And just to clarify, that the version in front of us, both 2A and 3C, have already been redlined to include, to make them applicable only to the junior highs. So that is where, that's the version that's already being presented to us.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other lights indicating further discussion. So we have a motion to strike 2A and 3C from page 60 out of the student code of conduct. Please vote. It's not on my screen. Sorry. Oh, here we go. Sorry. Okay, motion passes. So now we will go back to the original discussion and motion.
Dr. Reich, my motion.
Sorry, let me get this off of here. Can you clear that? It's still at the vote screen. There we go. Go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Reich, my motion now would be to accept. Student code of conduct is written with the accepted amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, yeah, 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 that was. Is there?
John's the original second.
Any discussion? I see no lights. Then please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. We have student code of conduct revision. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Sir, first, may I ask one question?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, and I didn't ask it this year, because I think I'm just going on assumption, we're not printing one of these for every single student anymore. We're doing it electronically still, correct?
That's correct.
That's all I needed here. Thank you.
So, moving on, the next item on our agenda is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items trustees wish to pull from the consent agenda to consider separately? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Reich. I'd like to pull Item B. Consider budget changes 2017-18 interim budget amendment.
All right. Any other items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Very good. So tonight, then, we'll be considering the items listed under consent, less Item B to be considered, excuse me, separately. Ms. Boult, would you please share any bids with us?
As a Reich Board members, Dr. Cavassos, we have two bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. In both cases, the administration recommends low bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Very good. Thank you. I'm willing to accept a motion to approve consent.
I move that we accept consent.
Oh. Go ahead. Say it to the speaker.
Okay, sorry. I move that we accept the consent agenda minus Item B.
B.
B, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Mrs. Mays, to approve the consent agenda less Item B to be considered separately. Any discussion? Motion carries unanimously. Consent approved. Now, considering separate, Mr. Hogg, wait, got to wait for this vote screen to clear. There we go. Go ahead, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. For this, I'd like the board to consider, and I'm willing to do the other option. I can make a motion with my changes, or y'all can make a motion, and then I can try and amend it, either which way y'all would like to go. For this, the recommendation is spending the, allocating money to fund the additional costs for the fine arts and athletics center, and a number of $21 million. Staff's recommendation is using the gas fund. I do not believe the gas fund is the proper use. I believe the natural reserve fund, our fund balance is the proper use, for the simple reason of allocating dollars. Gas fund gives us more leverage. In the last legislative session, the legislature passed that we can invest gas fund in more aggressive items than what is offered for the fund balance. We're very limited on what we can invest the fund balance. I believe the gas fund is a perpetually funded source. I do not believe a use of a building, amazing buildings, that should be built, that are properly being built, I'm doing, I do not believe that's the proper use. So with that, I would, whichever way y'all like. If someone would like to make a motion, I'll let Mr. Hibbs make a motion, and then I'll amend it.
Very good. Mr. Hibbs?
President Reich, I would like to move to amend the 2017, 2018 budget for the natural gas fund and construction fund to reflect changes identified since the adoption of the budget of June 20th, or June 2017, thank you very much, that we use the natural gas fund to fund the outlined.
Just say staff recommendation.
Yeah, staff recommendation, thank you. That we go with the staff recommendation on this.
Okay. There is a motion. I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Reach the max. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Dr. Reich.
All right. So there is a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton, for Item B, to approve the interim budget amendment, as staff's recommendation to allocate natural gas fund and construction fund to reflect the changes since the adoption of the budget in June 2017.
And, Dr. Reich, just a clarification on that to help you through procedurally of how we're doing this. I would recommend we go ahead and vote on this. If it then fails, I would be more than willing to make a motion after the fact to utilize the fund balance. Instead, if it passes, then this board's choosing to use the gas fund, so that way we wouldn't have to muddy it up with an amendment on there. I would let y'all go ahead and vote on it, and then if it fails, because if the prevailing, the failing party cannot bring a motion back, the prevailing party can bring back another motion. So with that, I'd encourage my colleagues to vote no for this, so that we can fund this out of the fund balance instead of the gas fund, so that we have more leverage with our dollars.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Is there any additional discussion? Motion carries six in favor, one against. Thank you. Moving on, next, we have a discussion item, A, the 2018-19 Board of Trustees Meeting Calendar. So we do have a calendar. This is just a discussion item. This is for our board meetings. Let's be clear about that. We do this every year, and this, as a discussion item, is here for your review. If there are potential date conflicts that you see, or have adjustments that you would like the full board to hear and think about, now is a great time to bring that up. If there are none, then this, well, either way, this item will be coming back as an action item at our next meeting. I see a question or a comment, Mrs. Mays?
Yes, thank you, President Reich. I just have a question about the month of June. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4 yellows, which is saying we're going to have four regular meetings in the month of June. Is that accurate?
Yes, I believe there's a, there's usually a caveat notation for the last June meeting there. That's because it's budget month, and we typically, as our precedent has been the past few years, is to meet weekly to get through budget and perhaps conclude with budget by that third meeting, versus just taking two meetings, which had been done years ago. So.
Right. Yeah, and I guess that was the clarification, that is, should something be marked to say that if it's necessary?
It is in the communication.
It is in the board book, that one, but it's not on the draft.
Correct. And so this calendar is, this isn't the official, what's in the board book is the official, where Ms. Walton has shown you that those specifications are the specifics. So this is just for us, for our own guidance, just in a graphical display, if you will.
Okay. Well, then I will not use the graphical display. I'll use the book.
Okay. All right. Okay, so.
Dr. Reich.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Reich, let me ask a question. When we originally, on that June session, going off of Ms. Mays right there, we moved those to Tuesdays because we used to go down to Tazby, one of our summer trainings in San Antonio, is why historically. And we are not going to that to save money. We don't use, utilize the cost of the hotel rooms to do that in June. So historically, I mean, I know, I think the 6th is a problem, because you've got graduation starting right then. Is that correct?
Right.
The problem. So why, what's, and I think the 20th is when the Tazby-Fort Worth one is held, if I'm correct. And I would just maybe, I know we're bringing that back, ask staff to review those, make sure those dates are on there.
Sure.
Historically, if we can, I think we should always stick to Thursdays.
Sure.
Just for public.
Absolutely.
To make sure we're staying consistent. We do have to move it at certain times and allocate extra meetings as that. So I'd just ask staff to review those dates for consideration of moving.
Sure. Okay, just to double-check. Absolutely. Okay, I agree. Are there any other, any other comments looking at this calendar for our meetings, which are typically by precedent the first and third Thursday of each month, with some exceptions, as we know? All right. Very good. Well, we will discuss that and take action on that at our next meeting, then. And moving on, because of the late hour, we are going to delay and move past the A through F accountability update. We will not be covering that this evening. And we then move to our open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards, so we can continue on to superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any school board members' reports? Mr. Hogg?
I mean, I've been up since like 4:30, so what's another five minutes? I would like just to report and thank our staff. Mr. Cale and I had the opportunity to represent this board in this district this last week, testifying before the House Pensions Committee. I would tell you, one of our top items as a board we have to consider is TRS Active Care. Ms. Walton, for all these years we've known each other, we talk about livable wages, right, for teachers? It's the comment, I think Ms. Walton actually taught me this in my very first year on the board, when she was standing out there fighting us constantly all the time. And it was a good conversation of where we had, but we're at the point now with TRS Active Care that we are at unlivable wages. It's, I would tell you, school finance is always an issue, but I would tell you, this is above school finance. Mr. Cale and I had the opportunity to testify. Mr. Cale's done a lot of work looking at TRS Active Care, of what can be done, what can happen. We testified before the House Pension Committee that was held in Dallas. We were invited testimony to speak on behalf of the AISD, but all in general, that. We made three proposals, just so this board knows, and I would ask for staff, at the opportunity, please send out our testimony for all of the board to be able to see, because we do have it written up. We made three options. The first option was fund TRS at the same levels of ERS. If you start comparing the disparities between TRS and ERS, it's a major drastic change. Who's on ERS? It's amazing how legislators are on ERS. And I think one of the comments he made was, well, I don't think ERS is that great. And I think my comment back to him was, well, you should be on TRS, and you'd see really how bad it is. So as we went through, fund TRS on the same levels. The other option was combine ERS and TRS Active Care into the two. Those are both truly not options. They're not going to do those. We know those aren't options. So the last option we proposed to them, because we made it very intent, we wanted to come to them with options of what they could do, because too many people come and complain. Last option we had was allowing districts with more than 1,000 employees to opt out of TRS Active Care. That would affect larger districts. TRS Active Care was originally designed for smaller districts, to help pool them together and help spread out their cost. Districts like ourselves have no incentive to go in, no control, cost controls, to be able to offer more benefits to our employees and offer that. It is a terrible disservice to our teachers from what we're offering, and we are tied with TRS Active Care. We need to be pulled out of this, and we've warned the staff, we all know this, there could be a financial cost when we're pulled out of TRS Active Care. It could be a million, it could be $2 million additional cost, but what that means is we're offering better insurance to our employees, and that is a satisfaction for employees. This is, I would tell, I thank the staff for all the work we put into this, sitting over at a meeting all day in Dallas. This is a fight we have to keep taking up, we have to keep going through, because it is a fight where our teachers are not provided, and we cannot allocate enough dollars to be able to supplement their costs, especially for a plan we don't believe is taking full cost benefits from what they're doing. And all they're doing is designing a plan based on premium cost and not cost reductions. So I thank Mr. Cale, I thank all of staff, I know you put a lot of time into this. Mr. Cale and I think have taken this up as our sword that we're going to the Hill with, and I think it's a good fight to fight for all of us to put, and it is part of our legislative agenda as a board. We've proposed that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sincerely thank you for representing the district and taking the time, you and Mr. Cale, and those that have prepared the documents and the testimony. Well put. Don't know what our outcome will be, but we have to fight the good fight, and thank you for doing that for us. Really appreciate that. Mr. Hibbs?
Man, I just, I can concur 100%. Healthcare is the next challenge for our teachers, and we've got to be forward on this. Mr. Hogg, I appreciate your leadership, both with Tazby and with the Governance Committee. The Governance Committee, you've done a tremendous job on this, especially with our legislative agenda. President Reich, you've always been very foremost and out in front with this, too. So I appreciate that, and I applaud our administration on that. We're getting in some very difficult times, so I can't say it any better than both of you already have. The other thing is, I just want to applaud this board. This board is already working well. We've had two amendments, our potential amendment, a second potential amendment. We've. were able to vet out and respect one another's opinions. I'm not always going to win and I, I respect that. But that's how a good team of eight works and I appreciate that we don't carry things on our shoulders. So coming from a point of losing, you know, I respect that. So I would just, I would just say that we're starting off out of the gates real well. So I just encourage us, we've got some big meetings coming up in front of us, a lot of big things to tackle. We don't wear our emotions on our shoulders and move forward to what is in the best interests of our district.
Very good. Well said, Mr. Hibbs, well said. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Reich. I wanted to just talk about two things briefly that I've had the opportunity to experience since our last meeting. The first was last week, there was a short presentation at Arlington Collegiate High School, our early college high school, that was, I thought, very special. A group of donors got together, led by a former school board member and state rep, and now on the Tarrant County College Board, Diane Patrick. There are 103 graduates in our first graduating class from Arlington Collegiate High School and they will have forever, as long as that school's around now, each one of those graduates will have a brick on the walkway there with their name engraved on it. And some of the students were very appreciative of that and I think it made a big effort. And that school has been such a success. We've been informed over the last week, information from Principal Bowlin there about the great things that are happening. I believe it was over 80 students are graduating with their associate's degree when the state average for early college high schools would, would indicate that it would be closer to about 40% of students. So great things happening at Arlington Collegiate. And then the other thing that I had the opportunity to go to was the, it wasn't a graduation ceremony because they weren't getting their diplomas, but the Pregnancy Education and Parenting Program, the PEP program, had their annual event at North Davis Church of Christ this week. It was the first time I had ever been to, to one of those and it was really special to see all of the students who, they're showing such perseverance. I mean, it's a, it's a happy thing. You can't say that having a baby in your life is not a happy thing, but also a very hard thing to take on at a very young age. And these students have made the affirmative decision to, to stick to their education and they're going to walk the stage over the next couple of weeks. And it was just great, the whole program, the way it was put together, our partners there at the church had provided a great meal for us and, and the program had put together a room, one of the rooms at the church had been set up with graduation gowns, cap and gowns, with all of the different high schools represented there. So students who hadn't been able to take a portrait in their cap and gown yet were able to do that. And some even who, who had, you know, took the opportunity to do it while they were holding their little ones. So it was a really special occasion and I was, I'm proud of that program, proud of those students and I was happy to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And yes, that's an incredible thing. Great things going on this time of year in our district, that program specifically. I think that, that is a key highlight to what we continuously say, that we are providing opportunity and access to that opportunity. And with the, the great work of the staff making those possibilities a reality, we have children graduating and looking at life in a whole different lens than what they had originally thought. So 100%. Mrs. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I just kind of want to go back to the conversation we were having about the health insurance and the testimony at the Pensions Committee last week. Anything we can do to help our, our teachers and all of our employees, some of them, you know, the insurance is eating up their, most all of their salaries, we, we need to do. But I, I want us to be cognizant of the issue that when these people retire, if we are able, if we are successful in getting removed from TRS, that when our people come to retirement and they need to get back into the TRS insurance, because that's where they're going to get their insurance during their retirement years, that we are very careful that, that the legislation or whatever we need to do to make that a smooth transition, that that happens for them too.
That's a, that's, that's a note to take into account. I'm sure Mr. Hogg and, and Mr. Cale, et cetera, will, will certainly navigate those waters. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further lights, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider going forward?
No, President Reich.
This is Spence, everybody was waiting. All right. Whew. It is 10:55 PM. We will not be going into closed session anymore. This meeting's adjourned.